Thank you. Can we have the roll call, please?
Council Agency Member Francisco.
Here.
Pachkas.
Here.
House. Self. White.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Mayor Schneider.
Here. Item number one.
Item one, Employee Service Award for Mark Hawkins.
So this item, I think you hear you get up at 3:00 in the morning, so we didn't want you to wait, or you start work at 3:00 in the morning. Come on up. Start at 5:30. Okay. So normally, we would have done this last time, but I'm glad you're here because we wanted you not to fall asleep while we were, because you have a long, you work very hard. So this is your PIN. And let me read this. "To honor and give thanks, Mark Hawkins, Senior Grounds Maintenance Worker, 30 years of service, January 20, 2010. Mark Hawkins was born in Santa Barbara, California. He graduated from San Marcos High School where he was a member of the football and wrestling teams. Mark's summer job in high school was maintaining the Galita Valley Little League fields. After graduating, Gail Hawkins, the City of Santa Barbara welder, and Mark's father, suggested Mark apply for a grounds maintenance position at the Santa Barbara Golf Club. Mark applied and was hired in 1979 as a grounds maintenance worker one at $4.10 an hour. Mark's experience maintaining Little League fields made his transition to the golf course operation seamless. Mark was able to perform a variety of tasks at a high level, leading to a steady progression up the organizational chart. Mark currently holds a senior grounds maintenance worker position at the Santa Barbara Golf Club, where he offers valuable information training staff members. Mark has witnessed or has been involved in the installation of an automated irrigation system, a new clubhouse, a half-million-gallon reservoir, a creeks restoration project, and the completion of cart paths. Yet, according to Mark, his greatest achievement is that his lovely wife of 22 years, Alicia, and two beautiful daughters, Shayna Shayna and Risa, still speak to him even though his alarm goes off each morning at 3:30 a.m. to wake him for work. Mark's dedication and hard work has been essential in growing Santa Barbara Golf Club into a premier municipal facility in Southern California. Mark looks forward to being involved with future improvements at the Santa Barbara Golf Club, helping to advance its celebrated reputation. When Mark is not at work, he's enjoyed spending time with his loving family. He is also an avid sportsman and a proud member of the San Inez Valley Sportsman Association. Mark participates in wildlife conservation through his Ducks Unlimited membership. And so, Mark, you've been a dedicated and valuable employee to the City of Santa Barbara. It's an honor to recognize your 30 years of service, as well as your many accomplishments. On behalf of the City Council and your fellow citizens, thank you and congratulations on this outstanding achievement." So, thank you.
I'd just like to thank the City Council for this opportunity to have such a great job, and thank all the people I work with, because without them, it's really hard. Thank you.
Item two, outgoing city advisory group member recognition.
I believe a number of people who are going to get these little certificates, we normally have a little ceremonial thank you in room 15 ahead of time, and whether it's because of the rain, or boy, when you're a border commission member, you're here often enough. You don't want to come here just to get a little certificate, but we do want to take the time to thank you very much for all the members who served on a border commission who are now rotating off, or for some of them who are moving on to a different border commission, or to another job altogether, as I believe one of them is to my right. So I'm going to read off the names so we can acknowledge them, and we will send out these certificates of appreciation after today's meeting. So on the Axis Advisory Committee, James Marston; the ABR, Christopher Gillian; Human Services Committee, Alice O'Connor; Westside Center Advisory Committee, Carlos Guero. And if I'm wrong and there's someone here, please let me know, but I don't think so. The Airport Commission, Dolores Johnson; Airport Commission, Karen Khan; Tom Maury in the Arts Advisory Committee, as well as Gail Pine, the Arts Advisory Committee; Joyce Ricard from the Central Coast Commission for Senior Citizens; Ella Serman from the Human Services Committee; Catherine Woodford on the Community Development and Human Services Committee; Michael Jordan on the Creeks Advisory Committee; James Hammack for Downtown Parking; Richard Glouss, Fire and Police Pension Commission; Ken Owen on the Harbor Commission; Kenneth Curtis from the Historic Landmarks Commission; Addison Thompson on the Planning Commission; Harwood Bendy White Jr. on the Planning Commission. Congratulations to you and thank you for your service on the Planning Commission. Vidal Shapiro's from the Westside Center Advisory Committee. So thank you to all those volunteers. It's amazing how much work you're doing to make our work easier on the City Council, getting a lot of policy done. So thank you very much, and we can thank you in absentia. And we will send these off to them afterwards. Okay, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there aren't, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I'm going to move on to public comment. I do have several speakers here. You're going to have two minutes, and you'll see up on the board there how your time is going. We're going to start with Bob Hanson, to be followed by Ken Locke. And I brought the gavel up, because you know. I'm going to start tough here, right?
Can I see that gavel one more time? Very nice. I bet you you know how to use it, too. Our city is named after St. Barbara, and I've always heard that it was like shelter from the storm. And we all knew there was going to be a big storm coming in about 10 days ago. And so, the Unitarian Church and some people got together and opened up Warming Center, and that was good. But then it went for three days, and maybe closed the day, or something like that. And I think when we have a situation like this, we need to say, hey, this is a big storm coming in, and people are getting wet, and it's cold, and it needs to be open for a duration, let's say 10 days possibly. But also, during the day possibly, if it's really raining, or if people are cold. And Nancy and I, my girlfriend, we're driving around. We get out and talk to some people for a few minutes. It is cold. It is wet. We get back in our car, turn the heater on. We go home. You know, it's a whole different ballgame when you're homeless. You're out there, you're cold, you're wet, and we all knew it was going to be a big storm. So I think we need to really reconsider how we handle this in the future. We need to have a period that we can tell everybody, no matter if you're an alcoholic, or whatever's happening in your life, we are having places that are going to be open. And when they know where they're open at, and maybe you could stay during the day and keep warm, because it's really serious. We just saw this earthquake that happened in Haiti, and they didn't know it was coming. But we knew this was coming. So we're, you know, we're all in this together, all of us, that we don't do this, and we need to do it. And...
You have 10 seconds.
I'm just going to go over just a few seconds. I want to see you use that gavel. But anyway, you know, we really, we really need to, you know, be sensitive. And some of the letters that are in the newspaper telling people...
Bob, I'm going to turn off the mic. Your time is up.
And Bob, your time's up, but I can tell you, because I volunteered overnight at the warming shelter on Friday, that it's been open far more than two days, and shut down. It was only shut down when it was breaking the storm.
All right.
Open up again, and there's been other warming shelters in Park and out of this that have been opening up as well. So I think people are trying, and the question is sustainability of it.
Yeah. I'm not saying they're not trying, but I'm just saying, we really need to think, because we get to go back where it's warm. They don't, you know what I mean? Thank you.
Thank you. Ken Locke, to be followed by Jack Wilson.
My name is Kenneth Locke. I went before the Arts Commission last time they met, made them aware of a website. I've had websites in the past. I just started one up. I have the address kennethlocke.net. And I'm also putting videos up on YouTube and working with both of those mediums. And I mentioned to the Arts Commission, I'm claiming to be the last of the avant-garde painters of the 20th century, and the basis of this Renaissance is based on the fact that we're going to understand painting, music, and dance as interdisciplinary, in relation to the mind-body-spirit-soul integration. On my website, I have a school that I'm developing. It's called the Interdisciplinary School for the 21st Century. I'm actually developing a museum online there, which I call it the Museum of the Abstract Art Movement. This is actually essential information, knowledge, for actually yourselves to enter into this Renaissance, as well as this community. You folks representing the leadership of this community, I'm hoping that possibly you could recognize this stuff and actually incorporate it within the community and promote that. So I would suggest you communicating with the Arts Commission and trying to inspire them to try to apply my information. I make myself available to this community. And I'm hoping that actually, it's kind of a challenge I'm raising. And right now, we have the Museum of Arts, and my art museum is actually going to, it's going to null. They're going to have to recognize the accomplishments that I have within the arts and embrace my information, which they haven't done. So if you can aspire them, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Jack Wilson, to be followed by Darlena Moore.
I'm Jack Wilson, and I want to welcome you, new Madam Mayor, you continuing members on the City Council, and you new members. You are a blessing to Santa Barbara. We're really fortunate that we have a more diverse City Council than we've had in years, and that will bring balance to what happens in Santa Barbara. And I just think that this coming year is going to be difficult and challenges, because you have less funds and many things to accomplish and challenges that come up. So one of the things I think that can be helpful is to work with the community. Many things can be done that way. And I'm just thinking, you know, we're talking about the homeless that have just, we've had five die this year, and we're, you know, we're all upset about that, and we're doing things now. But there's something that, that we, as we experience this through this year, we can be prepared next year, so that when anything happens, we're ready to go, and we won't go through this problem and suffering. Also, bigger government, you know, we have less funds. Bigger government doesn't necessarily mean better, but what it does mean that we work with the community and the people of Santa Barbara, the organizations, the individuals, and the churches working together, so that with this one thing, I'm just saying, this is a sample of all the things that we can work on, that we can get together and work to help Santa Barbara. So I just, Lord, I just ask a blessing on our City Council and a blessing on the people of Santa Barbara. In Christ's name, amen.
Thank you. Darlena Moore, and you have your son here who wants to yield his time to you, is that correct? Okay, if you could be, come on up, and they'll be followed by Andrea Roslinski. So I'll give you four minutes, but if you could keep it concise, that would be great. Thank you.
First, I want to congratulate you, Mayor Schneider, for your becoming mayor. Congratulations. On October 6, 2009, I came before City Council because I was very concerned for the citizens as a whole here in Santa Barbara. I wanted to come to let everyone know that Jamal and I have found a place here, but I still come before you now because I'm still very concerned. In April 2009, my son and I moved here from Tennessee, and there was a write-up in the Santa Barbara news press on May 12, 2009, as to why. On April 21, 2009, myself and Jamal, at the time was 17, who has a rare genetic condition, was evicted from the transition house after two weeks due to his disability, so they said. First and foremost, this is against ADA laws, which I did not know at the time. The day prior to this eviction, I had called Officer Thomas Echols out with the Santa Barbara Police Department, out to the Santa Barbara, the transition house, to file a report, that the transition house had put in the room with my son and I, a mother and her two little girls, three and four years old. He told me that there was nothing that he could do. Why would the transition house do such a thing? Why did Santa Barbara give Michael Jackson such a hard time? For to me, what the transition house did in this case was even worse than what he was accused of. We were given $100 by the transition house and told to leave, with the transition house knowing that we moved here from Tennessee, because I had had a lawsuit pending in Tennessee, because my son was discriminated there by a teacher. I guess this is why they wanted us, wanted to send us back to Tennessee. Knowing, they knew that I was one time a victim of domestic violence, who was under the Witness Protection Program. They knew that we had no family and friends here. They knew that Jamal was going to Santa Barbara High School, with the school bus picking him up at the transition house, knowing that myself and my son are on a very fixed income, knowing that my son was on medication to control his seizures, knowing that I was a veteran who served her country honorably, not on drugs, not an alcoholic, but truly a mother who wants the best for her son, knowing that I was in Jet Magazine in March 5, 2007, and did not receive a dime from Jet, but gave from my heart the story and the picture they have in the magazine. Due to this eviction, I have had to freely give away my body, in place of money, to a couple of men, when I did not want to, just to keep Jamal and I from being in the street, keep him in school, and keep a roof over our head. This, to me, was insanity, and this was the true reason behind my plea on October 6 of 2009. The chance organization here in Santa Barbara was nice enough to provide me with the facts pertaining to the Federal Register HUDDVAS guidelines and laws. My plea today is that this never happened to any other human being. Isaac Garrett, former NAACP president, is aware of the situation in even more details. He was nice enough to allow a piece of artwork that a man named Pete gave to me, free of charge, from an art gallery across from the Greyhound bus station, to be used at the Martin Luther King Celebration at the Arlington. He has given to me many other pieces of art, as well as to Isaac Garrett, that I hope can be used in other celebrations here in Santa Barbara. I really feel let down by the City of Santa Barbara, and I just hope that this will never happen to anyone else again. Thank you.
Thank you. You have Andrea Roslinski, and then the final speaker would be Nancy McCready.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor. And I've just been upset, you know, over the homeless issue, and I was homeless for a couple of years. So I've been trying to come up with some ideas. Well, the premise of my ideas, I need to fine tune. But I was just thinking, maybe somehow during the day, even like where they do the summer solstice, either the California Hotel, or where they do the summer solstice artwork, if that's open all year round. You know, there are so many talented homeless people that do art, like Sheila, she hangs down by Borders. And I feel like I've been here a while, and it seems like we could probably get, like, people that are living at the Falding, the El Correo, also the Garden Street, to work with the current homeless people. And, you know, how we're doing a census this year in America, I think it's time we do a census. I don't know if that's, you know, I haven't been going to all the meetings, but there needs to be some type of a census of the homeless, not to police them, but to actually find out, you know, where everyone's at. So, you know, and then maybe even assign some previous homeless people, like people buddy up together. You kind of get my idea. And then we all watch after each other, whether, you know, at night. It'd be great, even if somebody's intoxicated, or whatever. Maybe they need to have, you know, some of the people from Project Recovery, or, you know, some of the drug and, you know, drug counselors available to find people that, you know, so they don't freeze to death.
Yes, eight seconds.
And just, just to make, you know, I'm sure we can get a lot of people together. Like, let's say we opened, I also want to open up, you know, to get people together that do art, that are homeless, maybe every other month, to actually have a show.
Thank you, Andrea. And just to answer your question, there's the census, 2010, April 1, will be the date. And I know a lot of homeless outreach teams, we're working with a lot of groups, to make sure everyone gets counted throughout the county. So stay tuned for more information on that, but that is happening. So thank you very much, Andrea. Nancy McCready will be our last speaker.
I read in the paper about the two homeless friends that died, about two homeless friends that died. I'm very, very concerned, because there's a whole, there's a lot of different reasons why people die in weather like this, not only freezing to death, or getting wet and not being able to get out of their clothes, or any of that stuff. What I'm really worried about is, I don't understand, and I would like somebody to please tell me, why is it that doctors give out 150 pills of morphine, or methadone, or any of that to one person, especially if they are addicted to heroin and need to go on the methadone program? We didn't used to do that. Now we do this. And people are getting ripped off from each other. People are getting their pills stolen. They are, in turn, I'm not, I shouldn't say this, but some of them are selling their pills, because they get money for them on the streets, or people come from the community, believe it or not, down to the streets to get them, and pay money for them. So I just don't understand why we allow this to happen. And it seems to me that doctors should be a little bit more aware of it, or maybe our social services should be more aware of it. They should not be given that many pills. And I know this happens, because I live with a veteran, too. And I don't like the amount of pills a bug gets all at once. So, I mean, it happens to my friends. And take a vodka, a bottle of vodka on top of that, and it's lethal, especially if it's cold and wet outside. So I just wish we could do something about that, because when I was growing up, if somebody was getting off of heroin and had to do a methadone treatment, he would walk up there and get his methadone to someplace where he would get methadone on a daily basis.
Thank you, Nancy.
Sure.
I asked the City Administrator and Chief Dimizio to come in during public comment to talk about what's happened with the storms and what's upcoming. So Jim, do you want to bring it?
Yes, Madam Mayor. You'd requested that I bring Chief Dimizio. Chief Dimizio, obviously, is the fire chief, and he also manages our emergency services operation, and I thought he could briefly talk about the severe winter storm we had last week, and how well the city turned out and the problems we had, and also, kind of a caution, this is the first of the, of potentially more storms this winter, and the additional steps that can be taken over the next couple of months, as we face additional storm events.
Thank you. Chief.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Andy Dimizio, fire chief, here to provide you with a short briefing of the past week and a half or so of rain events, and the city's response to them. As you know, we had a rain of, almost a siege of the past week. It delivered us about five and a half inches of rain. But the weather was just one component that I'd like to touch on briefly. I'd like to mention the weather specifically, the city's response, and then the preparation of the events that led to so far a successful outcome for the city. So as I said, we had quite a bit of rain, but the forecasters were correct. The rain came with a lot of wind, and really, it was the wind that caused the majority of the problems. We were fortunate that the rain, when we did get the rain, it came through in brief spurts, and then blew through quickly, so we didn't have a rain condition where it was stuck on the mountains and dropped a huge amount of rain that would cause earth movement. The wind did cause the problems for the city, and in particular, there was over nine boats deposited on the shoreline in the city, four in the county. So there's boats on the shoreline. And most people are aware of the trees that were knocked down in the 200 block of Haley. It was a new condition I'd never seen in the city, a microburst. So apparently, that's a vertical shear of wind that can create quite a bit of damage. As far as the city's response, though, I'd like to acknowledge the good work that not only the Fire Department, of course, but the Police Department, the emergency responders, but a lot of the other units of the city, the public works people, in particular, the Parks and Recreations tree people who did, the forester people who did an excellent job cleaning up the trees when they'd fall, and of course, the utility companies that responded quickly to get our power back to our houses. So the response was quick from the city, and we were fortunate we didn't have any debris flows of any type to note. There was some debris up on the Upper Tunnel Road, but that's to be expected. So a lot of the good preparation work that was done beforehand by Public Works and by County Flood Control really paid off here. The hydromulching, the cleaning up of the debris basins, all those kind of issues really were critical, I think, to date, in the good outcome that we've seen. I'd also like to say, commend the public for listening very closely to the public outreach that we had. Over 13,000 sandbags were filled by the public, taken by the public. That's a new record. Usually, on a rain event, we hand out 2,000 to 3,000. So the public's to be commended for the good work that they did in protecting their houses. I'd also like to acknowledge the good work that our OES Division did here internally, in terms of communications across the board. And of course, it's raining right now. This storm is predicted to produce maybe a one inch of rainfall, which is maybe not that much by itself, but in light of the rains that we've had in the past, I'd like to ask the public and everybody to continue to be vigilant, to use situational awareness, because we know in certain areas, such as Sycamore Canyon, where we've had earth movement, that it doesn't even have to be raining to have a situation. So I'd like to keep everybody being heads up, and that's it, and I can answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
I also, actually, I have one question. Next, this coming week, the tides are supposed to be really high, and so the combination of rain and high tide, and just in terms of safety around the waterfront area, I don't know if there's anything in particular you want to add to that, but...
The forecast for the next week, we're supposed to get through this rain event by this evening. No more rain is predicted for this week or next week, but the week out, there might be some more rain. But of course, that's when we really have the problems, is when we have the high tide coincide with the heavy rainfall.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, and that closes public comment. Moving on to the consent calendar. I believe there's a number of items to read. Susan?
Item six, adoption of ordinance granting drainage easement to Caltrans on a portion of Parma Park adjacent to State Route 192. Recommending that council adopt, by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, accepting a contract offer in the amount of $1,200 for a grant of highway easement to the State of California, acting by and through the Department of Transportation, for a drainage easement adjacent to State Route 192, to be located on a portion of city-owned property known as Parma Park. Item seven, adoption of ordinance for five-year lease with one five-year option with Boat Launch Minimart LLC. Recommending that council adopt, by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving a five-year lease with one five-year option with Boat Launch Minimart LLC, effective February 11, 2010, for a 536-square-foot convenience store at 305 West Cabrillo Boulevard. Item eight, records destruction for Administrative Services Department, recommending that council adopt, by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara relating to the destruction of records held by the Administrative Services Department and the Human Resources Division. Item nine, bicycle transportation account local share of funding. Recommending that council adopt, by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, certifying that the city will make the required 10% local share of funding available for the Galita Slough Safety Improvements Project, should a bicycle transportation account award be made in 2010. And item 18, TEFRA hearing for American Baptist Homes of the West Valverde Debt Issuance. Recommending that council hold a public hearing and adopt, by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving a tax-exempt bond financing to be issued by the California Statewide Communities Development Authority to benefit American Baptist Homes of the West and certain affiliates.
And that's reading by title only. We'll wait for the reading. I just want to make sure. On item 18, the TEFRA hearing, I don't see any speaker slips. Is there anyone here to speak on item 18? You do have it's item, if you could, on, on the Baptist Homes? Did you want to speak to it? Okay. But I just wanted, because it's supposed to be a public hearing for that. So seeing no public speakers for that item, I'll close the public hearing for item 18. Anyone else want to take items off the consent calendar?
Madam Mayor?
Uh huh.
Items 10 and 17, just for a brief discussion, and not a separate vote.
Okay, 10 and 17. Any others? Okay, Susan, if you could read...
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to just speak about item 13.
13?
Again, no separate vote needed.
Okay. 10, 13, and 17. Anything else? Okay, if you could read, start with item 10, if you could read that.
Item 10, contract for final design of the Lower West Downtown Lighting Project and Brinkerhoff Streetlight Project. and Brinkerhoff Streetlight Project.
Okay, Mr. Hotchkiss.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. I just want to be sure that the improvements, changes, et cetera, are to street lighting only and not to any sidewalks, bulb-outs, street additions, intersections, whatever. And actually, the same question for item 17.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, John Owazie, Principal Civil Engineer for the Public Works Department. In response to your question regarding the Brinkerhoff Streetlighting Project, there are no intersection improvements related to that project for the Brinkerhoff Streetlighting. That's simply conduit and wire and poles that would, the conduits and lighting system to be placed underground with four streetlights added to the Brinkerhoff Street. Regarding the item 17, the Loma Alta sidewalk project, that has sidewalk improvements and streetlight improvements. And there are no bulb-outs or intersection improvements associated with bulb-outs or traffic calming devices associated with that project either.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. And then item 13, I have a feeling this might have the same kind of question.
Very similar.
Yes, Mr. Francisco?
I just wanted to clarify, because I had a couple...
I'm sorry, could we read the item just so people know what we're talking about?
Item 13, contract for preliminary design of the Chapala Street Bridge Seismic retrofit project.
And actually, I mean, this applies in substance to all of the bridge improvement projects. And I just wanted to clarify because I had some constituent questions concerning this. And I spoke earlier with Mr. Owazie, our Principal Civil Engineer. And he told me that these indeed are simply bridge improvement projects. There are no associated intersection modifications.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, just one clarification with that. With the Mason Bridge, there will be an intersection improvement. The intersection itself at Mason and Helena will be realigned slightly to accommodate the larger, or lengthened, bridge project. But there are, for that project, there are no bulb-outs or traffic calming devices. But there will be access ramps on all the mentioned projects that we were just talking about, the three projects being Loma Alta, Brinkerhoff, and, I'm sorry, not Brinkerhoff. It has no ramp projects. But the Loma Alta and the bridge projects may include some access ramps, but not bulb-outs.
Access ramps, you're just meaning the sidewalk's going to slope down to the street?
Correct.
But the shape of the curb is staying the same. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Anything else from the council? I'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
Move consent calendar.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, we are way over now to report from the ordinance committee. Chair White, move the order.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The ordinance committee recommended approval of the medical marijuana ordinance with, basically, as recommended by staff with a few minor alterations on a vote of two to one.
Okay, and that should be coming to council?
That will be coming to council.
I believe it's February the 9th.
Okay, so soon. Okay, thank you. Report from the finance committee. Chair Williams?
Today, the finance committee met at 12:30. And we basically looked at the typical and non-controversial interim financials for both the city and the RDA and our investment report and had a brief orientation for new members of the committee.
Great, thank you. Okay, item number 23.
Extension of medical marijuana dispensary suspension ordinance. Recommending that council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara extending a temporary suspension of the right to apply for or to obtain a permit for the opening or operation of medical marijuana dispensaries otherwise permitted by Santa Barbara Municipal Co. Chapter 28.80 on an interim basis.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wiley?
Madam Mayor. Yes, Mr. Cotto and Community Development Department have worked with the city attorney's office on this particular ordinance. And I offered to provide the introduction. This ordinance, set for introduction today, would extend the suspension of the city's existing marijuana dispensary permitting ordinance. That was an ordinance adopted by the city council in March of 2008. And as you know, the council has been discussing since last summer making possible revisions in that ordinance in response to some public concerns and concerns among council members. As we discussed possible revisions, the need to suspend the issuance of further dispensary permits became apparent. And in fact, the advisability of not even processing applications became apparent. So in December of last year, the council introduced and adopted a temporary, a 45-day suspension of the marijuana dispensary ordinance. And that was a step allowed for, provided for by state law, the state government code. Normally, in order to amend a zoning ordinance, the matter has to be publicly noticed in the newspaper. And there has to be some lead time to allow for planning commission comments for zoning ordinance amendments. However, in the government code, there is essentially a provision allowing for zoning moratoriums on an expedited basis. And that's what the city has, that's the process the city has used. So in December, the marijuana dispensary ordinance was suspended for a period of 45 days. That 45 days is going to expire at some point next week. And this ordinance would extend that, again, under the authority of the state law, would extend that suspension for a period of 10 months and 15 days, potentially. However, this ordinance is written in such a way that the suspension won't necessarily be 10 months and 15 days or for a total of 12 months if the city council adopts Phase One amendments to the, what we're calling Phase One amendments to the marijuana dispensary ordinance. At the point, and that's as the ordinance committee report just indicated, I think that that ordinance will be before the council in February. Of course, as part of the introduction and adoption of that ordinance, the council will decide how this suspension will work. But the suggestion now, the staff recommendation at this point, is that the suspension be lifted with the adoption of the Phase One amendments to the marijuana dispensary ordinance. And that's the way this ordinance is currently written.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the council first? We do have some public comment. Okay, I have David Bierman here. I don't see him. He's gone. Okay. So Tony Vasallo, to be followed by Bonnie Raisner. We have two minutes. Thank you.
I'm Tony Vasallo. I'm Madam New Mayor and council. And if I understand what was just said, I guess I would oppose adoption of Phase One actions by the committee in order to be in favor of supporting a continuation of the moratorium because I think much more work needs to be done on the ordinance itself before it's ready for adoption. Did I get that right?
Wait, just do your comments. We'll ask all our questions after public comment.
Okay. So I'm definitely in favor of a continuation of the moratorium. I'm also in favor of time for additional work to be done on the ordinance itself. The planning commission has made several recommendations and which, and we would support in terms of a cap of about two dispensaries in our city. But much work needs to be done. And so for that reason, would ask that the moratorium be extended. Thank you.
Thank you. Bonnie Raisner will be followed by Joanna La Force.
Good afternoon. I'm Bonnie Raisner. And I'd like the opportunity to concur with what Mr. Vasella just said, that a moratorium be considered rather than the Phase One extension. And that, at the same time, and I know there's been some support past ordinance committee and also today, of a lesser number than seven for the final number of collectives dispensaries. Carefully considered, the ones that are now exhibiting the, what looked like what the Attorney General had in mind and what sound like reasonable, the compassionate and the Santa Barbara patients. I heard a testimony from a woman who receives her medical marijuana from the compassionate, something, I don't know what the full name is. And it sounded beautifully regulated. In spite of our gentleman's comment today, in the opinion of many mental health advocates, alcohol and substance abusers, and I'm sure Cato would support me on this, marijuana can be perceived as a gateway drug. And therefore, the number of the dispensaries needs to be adjusted. And careful attention paid to the map, which I believe you all have, of the sober living establishments as well as daycare and the other schools, et cetera. But I think we need to be aware that we need more sober living houses just as we need more detox centers. And that we have to be careful that we don't put our priorities in the wrong place, that recovery is much more important in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. I also just want to clarify, this item today is on the moratorium. If you have questions or concerns about the actual Phase One amendments, that's not on the agenda right now. But it's about the moratorium itself. Thank you. Okay? So Joanna La Force, to be followed by Tim Cooney.
Madam Mayor and council members, my name is Joanna La Force. You've seen me many times before. I do have, I'm here to represent the Santa Barbara caregivers and, excuse me, collective alliance. I can't keep the names straight. We're a group of prospective and existing providers of medical cannabis. And we've organized for many reasons. We've established accreditation protocols for storefront collectives, et cetera. And we're committed to many things. We're going to continue to validate the ethical and professional and responsible standards that the collectives maintain. And we're committed to educate our neighbors and community about the health benefits of medical cannabis and during this moratorium time. I do have some information if I could give to council members, self and Francisco, the other members have received that. So, but anyway, we support a timely resolution to this, whether it means a moratorium of lesser months than 10 months. I really believe that time is of the essence and hoping that during this moratorium time, we can really educate and inform our community about the benefits of moving in a timely way and that regulation is important. And we all want that. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Cooney will be followed by Patrick Formey.
Good afternoon, council. I'm just here to reiterate what Joanna said. I had spoke earlier today about the time and energy that we've put into our project. And we're here to, we agree with adopting an ordinance and moving forward and just trying to get this done in as timely a manner as possible.
Thank you. Patrick Formey, and the last speaker will be Heather Poet.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I prepared for members of the council an itemized list of 20, what I believe are strong documents in terms of the medical aspects of medicinal cannabis and four important documents on the political aspects of what's going on currently. I prepared them for everyone, including Danny Cotto and Steve Wiley. And I just wanted to clarify in terms of how I read the particular wording right now is that it's 10-month moratorium or when an ordinance is in front of city council and voted on. Is that correct, Mr. Wiley? So it's either one of those. And I just wanted to take a second to inform the council that there's a larger looming picture, too, of initiative that's on the ballot that most likely will be voted on in November. And the polls show that it will most likely pass. And that's the legalization of cannabis in California. And so it's important to take a look at that larger picture and see if we can come up with some models and continue along the lines of the ordinance with the way it's written that are going to generate one, more protocols for the dispensaries as well as a tax model that could come in terms of revenue from the dispensaries or collectives to the city, especially when we're strapped. And there are different measures in different cities, or at least particularly one, that is passed and providing a great deal of revenue to that city. So in a situation that we're facing, I think the tax and tolerate consciousness is important for the council to adopt. I agree with there needing to be a moratorium because the way it was situated was that there was no limit on the ordinances that were being, excuse me, on the dispensaries that were being permitted. It was just Mr. Cotto and the planning commissions receiving these permitting, these applications and doing the best they could to process them. And there was no set limit. So I think setting the limit is very important. And I look forward to discussing this later at another time. Thank you.
Thank you. Last speaker will be Heather Poet.
Good afternoon. I'll make my comments brief. I just want to let all of you know as part of a collective in Santa Barbara, long-running, responsibly run, I want you to understand that not moving forward and not having your Phase One revisions enacted will inhibit you from having sensible regulation in Santa Barbara, which is what you want. And it's what your community wants. On both sides of the fence on this issue, what we want is sensible regulation. So in order to have that, you're going to need to move forward on Phase One revisions. And you're going to need to understand that Phase Two revisions are largely a matter of things that are constantly happening in state law and case law that's moving forward all the time. And that the ordinance as written is very sensible, very regulatory, very strict, and the kind of ordinance that you want. So I encourage you to do all of this in a timely fashion as Joanna and Patrick and many others have encouraged you to do. I think that it's the best thing for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it's back to the council. Actually, I want to ask Mr. Wiley if you could comment on the question raised between which comes first, the moratorium, the Phase One, what gets sunsetted? If you can answer those questions.
Madam Mayor, this ordinance provides that the processing of applications and any issuance of dispensary applications is suspended now for a period of 10 months and 15 days unless the council adopts Phase One amendments to that ordinance. And provides in that adoption of Phase One that the suspension is terminated. So as written, it could be 10 months and 15 days. I think the anticipation is it'll be considerably less. And it'll terminate, this suspension will terminate with the adoption of the Phase One amendments.
Okay, thank you. Okay, it's to the council. Questions, comments? Mr. House?
One of my concerns about this has been that there's,
One of my concerns about this has been that there's, in one of the parts of our revision that we're recommending from ordinance, there's a six-month, a reduction to six months in terms of a timeframe in which those that are non-conforming right now, those dispensers that are non-conforming, will have to conform with the, would have to conform with our current ordinance. And if the, with the 10-month and 15-day suspension, that would put, I think there's one, if not two, but at least one, that would put them in an impossible gray area. So I just want to say that is a preamble to, I think that, good news, that the ordinance committee has moved the revisions on to city council, and we'll be seeing that in just a couple of weeks. And it's based on that that I can support this. When we get there, I will be, if for some reason or another we can't conclude that, then it would be very, it would be really a difficult situation to be in. But I believe that I can support this, given that we are moving ahead, we've moved past ordinance, and it's coming to city council in a timely way. And unless there's any other comments, I'll move that we continue the suspension as it is in our staff report.
Second?
It's been moved in second. Any other comments? Mr. Hotchkiss?
No.
No? Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously. Boy, that was the easiest medical marijuana item we've ever had up here. That's a good, like that. Okay, thank you. Thank you all. Item number 24.
Advisory groups, updates, and council liaisons.
Okay. So in our staff packet, I just want to explain how this is going to work. Up here, we have a number of different commissions and boards and council committees, and we have liaisons to all of those. There are obviously our number of openings. We have a lot of new people here, and then people who are, who are here from last year through this year may want to change some things. So what I thought we do is go through them in order, hopefully reach consensus, have our clerk sort of take notes as we go, and then have one big motion at the end, as opposed to driving our city clerk crazy with multiple votes. If there, we'll see how that goes. And if there's multiple people with wanting the same slot, we can have a discussion about it and hopefully get to some agreement. Okay? So I'm just going to go to, starting with the City of Santa Barbara Advisory Group, Council Liaisons, we're going in alphabetical order. The Airport Commission, Mr. House, you are currently on there.
Yes, I'd like to continue doing that. Thank you. Although we do need an alternate at some point.
Do we usually have an alternate for airport? I don't see that, but...
Well, it's just, it hasn't been, but if I can't go, it'd be nice to know that I could turn to somebody to attend.
Okay. Anyone interested in being an alternate to the Airport Commission? You don't have to. There's no requirement, but...
Sure.
Okay, Mr. Hotchkiss. Okay. ABR? Mr. Francisco, you're currently on there.
I'd like to continue.
Okay. Mr. House is alternate?
I'd like to let that go as alternate and let somebody else have a chance.
Okay. Anyone else interested in alternate? We can also keep that open.
Yeah, I can stay on that. It's just, yeah, just...
Okay. Arts Advisory Committee, I'm interested in opening that up if anyone's interested.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, I'd be very interested.
Okay, Mr. Hotchkiss, great. The Building and Fire Code Board of Appeals, Mr. House, you're on there now.
Yeah, it doesn't meet too often. Somebody else may would like to take that up. Anybody else like to do that? Okay, I'll keep it.
Keep it? Okay. The Board of Civil Service Commissioners, Mr. House, you're also on that.
It's the same thing on that, too. If somebody else would like to take that, that'd be fine. No? Okay.
The Community Development and Human Services Committee, I've been on it for six years. I'm happy to have someone else have the opportunity. It's actually a great process.
Madam Mayor, could you tell me a little bit?
Sure. This is the committee that looks at all the community development block grants and the human services funding. They do, they have a very large grant process that happens in February. Those recommendations come to the council. These are grants that normally go to nonprofits about food, clothing, shelter, gang violence prevention, youth programs, and then there's a section on capital programs and neighborhood improvement. So it's that committee that does all the groundwork.
You got me.
You, well, good. Look at that. It is, it's a great committee.
Cool.
It's a really great committee. Community Events and Festivals Committee, Mr. House, you're currently on there.
I'm gonna stay with that.
Stick that? Okay. Creeks Advisory, there's an opening there. Mr. Williams, you're the alternate. Did you want to, that was, stay there, or?
You know, I would, I could stay the alternate, or I could become the committee liaison, whatever is convenient. If there's someone else that wants to partner, I would be happy to partner with them.
This is overseeing Measure B, Creeks, Munnies. There's a separate committee we appoint. So who would like to be the liaison to that? Anyone? Ms. Self? Speak, I can't look both ways. So, okay, council member Self, great. Okay? And then, Mr. Williams, do you want to stay as alternate then, or?
Yes, absolutely.
Downtown Parking Committee, there's an opening there. Mr. House has been the alternate.
Okay. And I'd like to be the, on the Downtown Parking Committee?
Yeah.
That's interesting. I've been, I've been serving as the primary on that for a long time. I'd like to be the primary on that.
So, Ms. Self, would you like to be the alternate then?
Sure.
Okay, great. The Board of Fire and Police Commissioners, there's an opening there.
I'd like to do that, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
I'd also like to do that and be the alternate.
Okay. How, how do we want to cover that? Or be the alternate? Would you be willing to do that? Mr. White, then, if you're the liaison? I need a yes or a no?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand your...
Mr. White, so both you and Ms. Self were saying that you were interested. Michael Self mentioned she could be the alternate. I'm asking...
That's fine. I was offering to be the primary.
Okay. The Board of Fire and Police Pension Commissioners, I'm telling, Mr. Williams, you're on there, and they meet once in a very, in a blue moon, if ever?
Yes, about once a year. And I'm happy to continue in that capacity.
Okay. The Franklin Neighborhood Advisory Committee, there's an opening there.
I'd like to volunteer, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Mr. White. Board of Harbor Commissioners, Mr. Francisco, you're currently the liaison.
And I'm happy to continue with that, but if there's anyone who has a strong interest, I'd also willing to.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Madam Mayor, actually, I do. I've been talking to them, trying to encourage or see if we could get more cruise vessels to come in, as well as military vessels, to sort of give temporary boost to our economy, and either as Mr. Francisco's alternate or primary, however he wishes.
Well, good luck with that item. Um...
I think a primary is really all that's needed for that position, yeah.
And are you happy with that?
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Hotchkiss will be the liaison. The Historic Landmarks Commission, there's an opening there.
I would be interested.
Okay, Ms. Self. The Housing Authority Commission, I've been on there most of my tenure here and on a commission. I'm, on the commission itself, I'm happy to open that up. It's a great organization to learn more about affordable housing in Santa Barbara. Ms. Self? Okay, the Library Board, Mr. Francisco, you are currently...
And I'm happy to continue, but I'm also happy to yield if there's someone who has a strong interest.
One? I think it's yours. All right. The Lower West Side Neighborhood Advisory Committee, that's also one I'm willing to, and that's going through a lot of transitions, all the different advisory committees for neighborhoods, but that's one that's open, I'm willing to open up. There's the Franklin, there's the Lower West Side, and there's the West Side. There are three of them. You'd like to, Mr. Hotchkiss?
I would take Lower West Side.
Okay, great. The Parks and Recreation Commission, Mr. Williams, you're currently the liaison, and there's an opening if we need an alternate.
I'd be, I'd be happy to downgrade myself from the primary liaison to the alternative. Ms. Self would like to operate in that capacity.
Okay. You getting all this, Susan, or?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Planning Commission has an opening.
I'd be glad to volunteer, Madam Mayor.
Just can't stay away from the...
I guess that's about as logical as it can be.
Can't get rid of me, right?
That's all right. Rental Housing Mediation Task Force, Mr. Francisco, you're currently the liaison.
And, again, happy to yield if someone else has a burning interest, but also happy to continue. Okay.
Great. The Santa Barbara Sister Cities Board, that was Mr. Horton's. I'd like, actually, to take that one, if that's all right. If anyone else has a strong, you don't get free trips or anything. I'm just, okay, just want to make sure people knew that. Sign Committee, Mr. House, you're currently the liaison.
I have not been able to attend those meetings, so I really would like to turn that over to someone else. That's one I haven't been able to attend. Same thing for the one that's following as an alternate, but Sign Committee, I just can't attend that because of the scheduling.
So Sign Committee, meets once every two weeks, something like that? Right. And you don't have to go to every meeting, just for new people coming in, it's just sort of keeping appraised, prized, whichever way it goes, of what's going on, so...
That's just one I really would like to turn over to somebody, because somebody should be checking in with them and being with them from time to time.
All right.
Okay, good. Thank you, Michael.
Ms. Self, thank you. Single Family Design Board, Mr. Francisco, you're currently the liaison to that.
I would like to continue.
Okay.
I mean, I can stay as an alternate, too, if you ever needed someone to go.
The Transportation and Circulation Committee, there's an opening. Mr. House, you've been the alternate. Did you want to move over or open that up?
Um, just a second. I, it'd be good for me to stay alternate on that one if somebody else would like to take that.
I'd be interested.
Ms. Self? The Water Commissioners, Board of Water Commissioners, there's an opening there.
I'll volunteer for that, Madam Mayor.
Okay, and did you also?
I'm willing to yield, Mr. White, on that one.
You're still on the...
I'm still on CCWA.
CCWA, and Mr. Williams is still on, well, we'll get to COME and CCRB, so we'll have lots of expertise about water. Okay, great. The West Side Neighborhood Advisory Committee, I'm also willing to open that one up as well. Who's taking the Lower West Side one? Was that Mr. Hotchkiss?
It was.
It might make sense to look at both of them.
Well, it might. I'm just worried about, I've already signed up for four of these, four and a half. Am I ever going to see my family again?
No. You signed up for this.
You have, you have a new family.
I should have asked this before.
Might have asked that one question before the election.
Okay, well, I'm trying to avoid this, as you can tell here.
Well, let me just put it this way. I know the Parks and Recreation Commission is looking at revamping and looking at the neighborhood outreach services, and there may be changes that hopefully will result in fewer meetings, but unless there's a desire on someone else's part to share...
Uh-oh.
Take it?
Okay.
We can always come back and change it later if you want to have that.
All right. Done.
And then the Youth Council, Mr. Williams, you are currently the liaison to that.
I'd be happy to downgrade myself as the alternate if somebody wishes to be the primary liaison.
Someone want to be on the liaison to the Youth Council?
Okay, I'll stay.
Stay there? Okay. I don't know if we need an alternate.
I'm now seven years older than when I started. I'm still the youth.
Does everybody else?
Okay. We'll just keep... All right, that's, that's the bulk of it, I think, in terms of the, well, that's all the boards and commissions. So we'll move on to the council committees. The first one is the Committee on Legislation, and currently, Mr. Williams is the only one currently still serving who was on the list, and there are two other openings.
I'd be happy to continue on that committee.
Okay.
And I, you know, I would like to see some folks step up and serve on the committee with me, definitely.
Just, just to add on, this is different than being a liaison to board and commissioners. These actually have to show up and actually do stuff. You know, you're not participating in the board or commission meeting, like, as a, you know, in the, you're actually participating on the committee itself and moving things forward, probably to council for...
When do those meet?
Well, I'm sure we can change that, depending on who's on the committee.
Oh, okay. In the past, it's been on one Monday a month at noon, but I'm happy to change that time if, at Marcelo and...
Yeah, I'd be happy to sit on that committee. I'd be honored to...
And I'll volunteer, Madam Mayor, if there's no one else that wants to be on it.
Williams, House, and White. The White House on legislation, that's very good. I like that. Okay. commuter rail exploration, Mr. House and myself are currently on there. I'd like to stay on there, as would Mr. House. There's one opening, if anyone's interested.
I'll serve on the committee, but I was thinking that it would be a good idea to have ideological diversity on that committee. If no one is willing to step up, I think I would be ideologically diverse.
Okay, Mr. Francisco? I'll give you, I'll give you good credit if we change Amtrak schedules this year. How's that, Mr. Francisco? I'm just teasing. Okay. Finance Committee, we already figured out. The Lower Mission Creek Design Committee, I'm on there. I'd like to stay on there. I think that's pretty much, hopefully, we just need a lot of money from the federal government. We can close that one, but...
If public works staff thinks we need this committee for about another year, and then we can go away.
Yeah, and then we'll probably be done. Because it's about the design piece of it, and then it's all under construction.
Madam Mayor, I'd ask to be the, an alternate on that, since I've been following this for the last...
Sure. Were you the, one of the planning commissioner members on? Okay. Okay, and then Mayor Pro Tempore, we figured out already. The Ordinance Committee, we figured out. The Committee for Neighborhood Advisory Committee Interviews. Now, normally, what that's about is when we have interviews for boards and commissions, we invite those applying to the Franklin Center, representing the neighborhoods on the Human Services Committee, the West Side and the Lower West Side Committees, to meet outside chambers in, at one of their publicly noticed advisory committee meetings and have the interviews off-site. We find that that's a better way to expand the diversity of applicants and get people to apply and serve. So traditionally, in the past, the people who've been the liaisons to those committees have served as the interview panel here, but that doesn't always have to be the case, but that's what has happened before. If that was the case, then, and this is a two-time-a-year situation at a meeting you would normally go to anyway, so if we wanted to do that, it would be Mr. Hotchkiss. And who's Franklin Center? Oh, we, did we skip that? Ms. Self?
Myself.
Oh, yourself. Mr. White.
Myself.
Myself, yourself. Mr. Hotchkiss, Mr. White, and then we'd have one other member of the council, if that's... And Mr. House, you're currently on there, if you want to.
Which one is that?
This is the Advisory Committee Interviews Committee.
Oh, yeah, I'll continue.
Is that okay with everyone?
Yes.
So it'd be Mr. Hotchkiss, Mr. White, and Mr. House. And it would be...
Did I just get appointed to something here?
But it's, it's, if you're interested, it's a meeting you'd go to anyway as a liaison to the West Side and Lower West Side.
Oh, I see.
And it's just part of the interview.
Double duty, sort of two hats one time?
You got it.
Okay, I can do that.
Okay, good. Thank you. And then the Sustainability Council Committee, right now, myself and Mr. Williams are on there. I'd like to stay on there. I believe Mr. Williams would like to...
Yes.
...stay on there, so we have one opening for that.
And I'm available for that, too, Madam Mayor.
Okay, we have two.
Do we have to arm wrestle or something?
Well, there's also an alternate for the, for it. So...
I think that Ms. Self was, was alternate to me on one, so maybe we could just turn that around the other way.
We could do that?
I'll be the alternate.
Okay. All right. Self will be the regular and White will be alternate. Okay. Okay, now we're up to council liaison to city-related agencies. We have the Coast Village Road Merchants Association. Mr. House, you want to stay with that? The Conference and Visitors Bureau, that one's open.
I can give people the details on that, since I attend many of the meetings. The Conference and Visitors Bureau and Film Commission is one organization, but we have a liaison to each because of the different functions and because of the fact that it's kind of a heavy meeting and it, I mean, it's not a heavy meeting, it's really a nice meeting, but it, it's one of those ones that we definitely should have one of us showing up most of the time. It meets on one Thursday a month from 8:30 to 10 o'clock.
In the morning?
In the morning. I'd much, I'd much rather have them do it at night, but, you know...
Right. I'll volunteer for that.
Okay.
Conference and Visitors.
Okay.
And so, you know, if I stay on the Film Commission, that means we'll continue to work together.
Great.
Great. Downtown Organization, Mr. House, you've been the alternate, and do you want to move over to...
Yes, I've been actually taking Mr. Horton's place for the past few months, so...
Okay. And do we want an alternate to that?
I'd be glad to volunteer for that, Madam Mayor.
And the Fighting Back Steering Committee, that one's open.
I'd like to take that one. I'd like to take that one.
Okay, Mr. Williams, that's fine. The Greater Santa Barbara Lodging Association, Mr. Williams, you're still there?
I, I, I continue to work with them, but I'm happy to, I definitely, we definitely need an alternate, and, and I'd have, happy to downgrade myself.
I go to all their, all their meetings, or as many as I can, so I could be...
You want to be the alternate then?
Yeah, if Grant already goes to the, all the meetings, it'd be fine to...
The House? Okay. Looking good, Santa Barbara Committee. Mr. House, you're usually, you are listed as the...
Yep.
Continue that. The Presidio Joint Powers Committee, that one is open. That's actually an old-standing JPA, right? So, we need a council member, this is dealing with the presidio at the trust.
They meet once a decade, or...
I don't know how often, do you know how often they meet?
Century.
I, I think it's very infrequently.
Yeah.
In fact, I can't remember when, last time I've heard of a meeting.
Well, if you need someone to fill in, I'll fill in.
There you go.
I'll put my name there.
It sounds like my committee.
Your kind of meeting. Mr. Francisco, you're it. Okay. Santa Barbara Beautiful, Mr. Williams, you are currently, stay there?
I'll stick with that.
And you want to stay with the Film Commission?
Though, though we probably want to make sure that they email me the times, because that's been a little bit haphazard, and I'd be happy to stay on the Film Commission.
Okay. And then, the MTD Board, Metropolitan Transit District Board, I'm on that, I'm willing to open that up, if anyone's interested.
I'll stay as an alternate.
Okay. Anyone interested in being the liaison? You get to actually be on the agenda and tell them anything you want about the city of Santa Barbara. No, I'm just kidding. Not anything, but it's a great way to learn about the MTD Board and the connection between the city of Santa Barbara and MTD. I can stay on if no one's interested, but...
You go stay on it?
You want, unless, unless there's interest, certainly.
I mean, there's interest, but I, I think I'm stretched thin here.
Okay. I will...
I'd be interested.
Myself, you want to? Sure. I think it's always good to expand knowledge with all the different council members on this, so why don't you take that? Okay.
Nope, can't make a meeting. I like going to those meetings, they're good.
Now, the final one, some of these are appointed by outside agencies and not by us, so we're just going to go one by one as we go. The first one is Beacon, which is the Beach Erosion Authority for Control Operations and Nourishment, which is why they call it Beacon. Mr. Williams, you're currently listed there.
Yes, and I, I would be happy to give that over to Mr. House, if he's still interested in that appointment. It meets six times a year, from 9:00 to 10:30 in the morning, and it's, works with representatives from each one of the cities in Ventura and Santa Barbara Counties, and each one of the supervisors that represent coastal districts.
Okay, very good. I'm happy to do that.
Okay. The Kachuma Conservation Release Board, or CCRB, Mr. Williams, you are there, and also COME, Kachuma Operation and Maintenance Board, that should probably keep those two the same, or does that...
Yes. That, that's usually a good idea, and is usually the practice, and I'd be happy to continue in that capacity. I am the president of COME at this point in time, and we're not even sure if CCRB will continue to exist for very much longer. It is, I do need an alter in it, alternate, because, you know, there may be a meeting or two this year that I cannot attend, and it's just very important issues for this year, in particular, the question of the Second Barrel Project, which is probably the most important water safety issue, you know, in our tenure on, on the council, and then, of course, ongoing fisheries work that we are mandated to do by the biological opinion.
And this is an actual voting position, so...
Yes.
Yeah.
And I, I would be happy to be the alternate on that.
Okay. Mr. Francisco, on both?
Yes. I think, I think, given his, given Mr. Francisco's participation in CCWA, this would be useful.
Okay. So, then, I'm assuming you want to stay, you just got on CCWA?
That's right.
So, you want to stay on that?
Yes.
And then, as an alternate, we, Mr. Williams, you're listed.
I can continue to be the alternate. There are, at this point, very little discretionary things happening. It's, it's good information for statewide issues, but...
Okay. The City-County Affordable Housing Task Group, I, I was, I'm under, I have the understanding that is still meeting at the county, I don't know how often. There's an opening there.
Quarterly.
Quarterly? Mr. Francisco, you are, are there two, two spots? It looks like, Mr. Francisco's one, and there's an opening on the other. There's interest there. I mean, I could do that. Okay? I'll take, why don't we do that with Mr. Francisco?
We should let them know, they still think I'm on the committee, and I haven't been on the committee for a year.
Okay. Well, we'll send updates to, of all this, I'm sure. The City-County Solid Ways Task Group, right now, Mr. Williams is the only one still here who is, there's two spots there. I would actually like to do that one as well. This is about trash.
I'd volunteer for that, too, Madam Mayor, if there's a spot.
Would you be willing to be an alternate there?
Whatever.
Okay.
However I can help.
Okay. Community Action Commission, Mr. House, you are still there on the board?
Very much so, I can continue that, thank you.
Okay. The Governing Board of the Tenure Plan Process and Climate Homelessness, I'd like to stay on that board, if that's okay. And then, certainly, there's lots of ways to get involved with that in other capacities. LoSan, I was actually, where it says Bloom on there, this is appointed by the SB CAG Board. I was appointed as the LoSan alternate to SB CAG. Mr., Supervisor Carvahal is, is the regular member, but I'm the alternate, so that's already taken care of.
Very important to represent the city.
Yep, there's a meeting tomorrow, I'm going to. And the Santa Barbara County Air Pollution Control District Board of Directors. Tradition, through, with, this, this regional board meets at the same day in the afternoon when their SB CAG meetings, at the same location, so it makes a lot of sense for the SB CAG member to also be the APCD member, otherwise, we're going up and down to Santa Maria at different times, and sometimes those meetings are...
I nominate you.
Okay, so if we could keep that. This is also the first time APCD is allowing for an alternate. They have not allowed that before, but they are doing that now. It might make sense to keep that consistent with SB CAG, if, Mr. Williams, you can be willing to do that.
I'm, I'm fine to do that.
Okay, since you're going, if you'd be going up anyway for SB CAG meetings, you'd just stay for APCD. The South Coast Gang Force Leadership Council, I've been working during the transition period with, without going Mayor Bloom and, and working with people coming in now, so I'd like to continue doing that. We do need an alternate.
I'd be happy to do that.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
I'd be happy to continue as alternate.
Continue as alternate?
I have attended most of the meetings, so...
So, I defer.
Okay. So, let's do that. And then, the South Coast Homeless Advisory Committee, I'd like to, there's a lot of connection between the Tenure Plan and the South Coast Advisory Committee. I'd like to keep that consistent, if we could, and I'll certainly keep you updated.
Do you need a motion, Madam Mayor?
Yes. Now, first, Susan, do you have any questions? Are you set? So, if we can entertain a motion for all those amendments to the, this group?
I move the liaisons that we just assigned, any, any, ah, any alternates.
Okay. Is there, great. Motion is second, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, piece of cake. Okay, thank you. We have on the agenda, I'm going to bring this up, but count, because it's only 3:20, council member committee assignment reports. In the past, we've had mu, many, many, many hours talking about all, everything we've done since the last council meeting, and that sort of takes forever, and I don't recommend that, but I do want to just alert that if there's something related to a meeting that you've been to and since, since the last meeting that you think is pertinent to city operations right now, this would be a good time to bring it up. So, I do want to open it up, if there is anything like that. I know three people went to Sacramento, that might be, this would be, for example, an appropriate time to bring that up. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's, of course, the Boot Camp, as it was called, is sponsored by the League of California Cities, and there was one piece that, that was a theme throughout the, the session, besides the training, which, which was excellent, was the, the league is, is putting together an initiative to protect local funds, as it has done once before, I believe it's Prop 1A, and I, I don't have the, the specifics of that, of that protection. I will actually make an effort to, to get that document and, and bring it and distribute.
I have it, we can...
You have it, okay. Anyway, that was one particularly interesting piece that, that came up at the, at the session, and obviously, they've been suc, they, we have been successful once in the ongoing battle to protect funds, so, as I say, otherwise, the, the training session certainly was, was worth our going, and it was just a, a special experience and, and one that appreciate the city investing in us to do.
Thank you. Mr. Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There was a recent special meeting of the Central Coast Water Authority, the body that's responsible for the state water project, and the topic of that special meeting was negotiating with the county to claim 12,000 acre feet of suspended water rights, and I think this, well, I know this is going to move forward, and, and we will bring this before council, because we have the option of being one of the member districts that purchases some of those suspended acre feet. It appears that they will be quite expensive, so we may not decide to do it, but it's something that definitely will have to come before council.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Williams?
Well, as many of you know, one of the more painful crosses I've had to bear for the last year is trying to shepherd the bond for the Second Barrel through COME and through the various member agencies of COME, and everybody's issues were supposed to be taken care of, and then, there is, I suppose, a minor issue that was resolved without moving forward, but I think our attorney at COME issued the opinion that there is nothing inherent